All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 16th meeting. We will start with our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine. Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshino Farrell.
Here.
All are present. Back to you, Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you. For Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Gupta, will you lead us, please? All right, I will read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically this Noqomie Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so we will start with public comment in the room, and then we'll move to online if anyone has signed up. So I'm assuming Mary has probably signed up. If you want to start. Do we have one before? Mary? Okay. Awesome. Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Hello, this is Mary Victor. I've been in Samamish 24 years now. I'm speaking tonight on the Lewis Thompson Tight Line. I don't have any reason that I want to slow up the project, and it shouldn't make it any cost anymore. The contract that you have, I believe, is with Osburn. But I would like to have things that aren't clear, or I've spoken with council members and also the city staff, and I'm not sure if it's going to be in the project. So the actual scope was passed by you guys in September of 2022. It was supposed to go all the way up to 210th Place Southeast. That was never supposed to change. It wasn't recorded to change. But what's happened is that about the top 300 feet, the city, there's ditches there that used to get used. I think they're just going to fill them in and put a sidewalk on it with maybe some side drainage. But there isn't a tight line or a connected pipe that you can have. And the problem that I have with that is Tamarack has a lot of houses that were built, and their runoff goes down. It causes flooding on Lewis Thompson into the streets and onto the curves, whether it's light rains or heavy rains. I've done photos of that. And when you have that, I learned from the city engineer, who's very good, Jed Ireland, that you're really not supposed to be sending flooding in the city of Samamish to the roads. In other cities, maybe you can, but ours has code that you can't. You also shouldn't be sending high flows and very fast flows into the landslide hazard area or erosion, because that's really bad for Zaccoose Creek, and it's also just safety. There was a $1.3 million landslide. So in Tamarack, there's actually 25 houses at the top, 15 at 210th Place Southeast, which does cause flooding there, and then 20 below that at 210th Avenue Northeast. So what happens is when there's all that flooding, it fills up here, and it goes into the road, and then it goes across. And if it doesn't go there where it caused the landslide, it goes down and either goes into the landslide hazard area, or it crosses curves, which we really don't want to have happening. So what we need to do is, if you have fast flows or overflows or overtopping, they're supposed to be controlled, not just for the 25-year flows, but also for the 100-year event. And in order to do that, you need a place that you can capture the water, and then maybe it can be held. So there is a place, right at 210th, if you just turn around from the birdcage and you look, there's a big grassy green ditch. It's about this steep, and a pipe can be put in there under the sidewalk. What I don't want you to do is allow them to put the sidewalk over the ditch, erase the ditch, and get rid of it. It needs to have a pipe all the way up. That pipe needs to be long enough that it goes to both sides of 210th, like it used to, and it needs to be big enough that it could convey all the flows that might be coming to it. And then there's some flooding at 210th Avenue Northeast. It's been sheet flooding since 2013. That can be addressed by adding just one catch basin, and I already provided examples of that from Inglewood and DeStaff. And then there's flooding that happens down on 205th. And I looked at Storm Band, and it looks like there's supposed to be a catch basin there. Maybe it's buried, because that happened quite a bit in 2013. But if they can't find one, they should put one in. So two catch basins, run the right-sized pipe, the full distance. Let's not have any piping.
Thank you.
It's too short or too small. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so online?
Per the new reasonable accommodation, those who had pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. Okay, we have no online commenters.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so first up, we do have our board and commission interviews. We're going to start with the, oh, I guess it's just commissions tonight, our Arts Commission. So, let's see. Michael? Awesome. So we'll give you, I think it's five minutes total. You'll be able to introduce yourself, and then our deputy mayor will have the question, which I think you got ahead of time.
I did get it. I did get it, yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. I think I can get this done in three and a half. We'll see how it goes. So my name's Mike Gaffney. I've been a Samamish resident since 1999, since my wife Kelly and I moved here to raise our two sons. Over the last 25 years, we've enjoyed watching Samamish grow and develop around us while raising our boys. I'm a licensed architect and an interior designer with a passion for art, music, and creativity in all of their many forms. When my sons were younger, opportunities to help build our community seemed to be everywhere. Among my most cherished memories from that period are the days that I got to spend at McCullough Elementary School, teaching Art Starts in both of my sons' classes. It's, Art Starts is an art curriculum that is mostly supported, or at the time was mostly supported, by parent volunteers. And also creating elaborate art projects to be auctioned off at annual school fundraisers. But now with our sons grown, which always makes me a little teary, I see our city from a slightly different perspective, one of a future grandparent, and hopefully someday a happy retiree. And I continue to search for ways to use my creative interests to make a meaningful difference in our community. So a few weeks ago, when I saw the Open Arts Commission position on the city's website, it seemed like a great opportunity, and from my perspective, a perfect match. If appointed, I would like to see the Arts Commission continue to focus on initiatives that promote community involvement and that celebrate the cultural diversity we enjoy in Samamish through participation and collaboration. While researching this open position, I have been really inspired by the work that the Commission is already supporting. Smaller-scale projects like the Big Rock South Park Pollinator Panels are a superb example of bringing our citizens together to actively participate in the creation of public art, while building a greater sense of community for all ages. Larger initiatives like the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, aspiring to help make Samamish economically viable as an arts center, could really put Samamish on the map as a regional destination for people seeking an authentic, culturally diverse experience. Specifically, if appointed, there are several initiatives that I would be thrilled to actively support. I'd like to see us bring back the Samamish Arts Showcase, an event that celebrated a kaleidoscope of various art forms and was building momentum, but then seemed to fade away a few years ago. And I'm assuming, as a citizen of Samamish, in the middle of COVID and the pandemic, it probably was hard to keep programs like that going. I'm also very interested in opportunities to bring more live music and theater to Samamish, showcasing local talents of all ages, as well as other regional performers. Additionally, I'd like to help support the Arts Commission's collaboration with other committees, commissions, and boards within the city. I have limited visibility at this point, but I'm confident that my experience working with cross-functional teams in the private sector would lend themselves in this arena. And ultimately, if appointed to this position, I will support wherever support is needed. I'm a team player, an inspired servant leader, an organized project manager, and perhaps most importantly, a longtime neighbor, genuinely invested in building and celebrating all forms of art within the Samamish community. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you so much. All right, Sumya? And then Deputy Mayor Howe will read the question. So I forgot, just for the record. Yeah, go ahead.
Answer the questions.
Yeah, no, but I think just for the record, we can at least say, we did have a question. I just forgot. But you asked it and answered it yourself. Go ahead.
So the question that we have for the Arts Commission open, Commission slot, is what topics would you like to see the Art Commission work on during your tenure, if you're appointed?
Thank you so much for your question. Esteemed members of the City Council and my fellow citizens, I must admit, I might not fit the typical image of a programmer living on pizza and code. In reality, my evenings are often filled with artistic pursuits. I have a deep passion for all art forms. You might find me engrossed in paintings in various styles or crafting integrated paper creations. My love for Indian ethnic dance forms has led me to perform on various stages, and my training in Hindustani classical singing has allowed me to bring this beautiful art form to life. Additionally, I've had the honor of being a published international fashion model and even crowned Mrs. India 2019. I find great joy in empowering others. As a pageant coach and judge, I strive to help others embrace their inner confidence. I'm also deeply involved in social causes, serving on the Board of Sadhana, an NGO which uses art to raise awareness, and volunteering with organizations like Intermuse Productions, Code Chicks, Girls Who Code, Gospel Men's Shelter, and Hope Women's Shelter. While I'm fortunate to have these experiences, I believe they are just a part of who I am. My diverse background and passion for making a positive impact drive me to seek new opportunities, such as contributing to Samamish Art Commission. On a crisp autumn afternoon, I found myself basking in the golden glory of the sun at the Vintage Park. As I wandered along a path I hadn't explored in a while, something unexpected caught my eye. Nestled among the rustling leaves stood a miniature house. Its vibrant colors drew me closer, and to my surprise, it wasn't a house at all. It was a tiny library. Adorned with colorful tiles and painted in a cheerful hue, it housed a collection of children's books. A heartwarming inscription on the side read, "Take a book, share a book." Intrigued, I peeked inside and found a sweet note left by a resident explaining how she had built this charming haven with a younger daughter to encourage reading and foster a sense of community. The simple gesture sparked a fire within me. Imagine similar little libraries popping up throughout Samamish, each reflecting the unique artistic spirit of its creator. This vision forms the foundation of the three-point proposal, which I want to propose to the Samamish Arts Commission. The first one is to make city more visually and artistically inspiring. The Arts Commission can empower residents to play a vital role in its artistic transformation. Imagine a variety of small-scale projects scattered throughout Samamish, like the charming little libraries. We could provide residents with resources, workshops on building miniature libraries, and even partner with local artists to design them. Residents could design and install similar, small, but effective projects, such as vibrant murals, interactive arts installations, or organized community beautification projects in parks and neighborhoods. The Commission's role would be to equip residents with the resources and support they need. They could include workshops and various art forms, providing access to materials, and even connecting residents with skilled volunteers or local artists who could offer guidance. My second proposal is building a sustainable foundation for the arts. Creating more projects like little libraries requires a solid foundation, with a financial foundation. Now leveraging my background in tech, I would actively explore and attempt corporate sponsorship opportunities, showcasing the positive brand association and community engagement such partnerships would bring. Well-organized fundraising events offer another exciting avenue to explore. These events wouldn't just be about raising money, they would be opportunities to showcase local talent, foster a sense of community ownership, and generate excitement for the art scene. And lastly, my third peg in the tripod would be community engagement, which is the heartbeat of the arts. A thriving art scene pulsates on the active participation of its residents. We can raise awareness of artistic initiatives through various channels like social media campaigns, local news collaboration, and community events. Most importantly, we must actively seek feedback from the community in the form of online surveys, social media polls, open forums, community workshops, et cetera. By encouraging resident participation, we wouldn't just be beautifying the city, we would also be fostering a sense of ownership and community pride. So to just sum it all, three-pronged approach, encompassing artistic beautification through resident-driven projects. Second would be securing resources through corporate partnerships and community fundraisers. And third would be strong community engagement via feedback. That's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we'll do both interviews back-to-back, if that's okay? And is Kevin online? Awesome. So we'll have...
Would you like her to interview again for Human Services, or she applied?
Well, I was going to say, you could just answer the one Human Services Commission question, and then we can get Kevin pulled up. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so the Human Services Commission question is, are there any gaps in programs or policies related to the work of the Human Services Commission that you would like to help the city address? Please explain.
Thank you so much for your question. I didn't imagine that I'll be standing here again after arts, so I have prepared something. I'll skip my introduction, because I covered it in the arts, so I'll just directly go to answering the question you just asked me. So while Samamish offers a wealth of human services, I believe there's an opportunity to bridge the gap between residents and the resources available. Again, here is my three-pronged approach I propose to address this. First, shining a light on hidden gems. Public awareness of existing programs seems to be a hurdle. Many residents, for example, might not be aware of the Metroplex, our on-demand local shuttle service, or the elderly meetup and workshop programs offered by the Human Services Commission. Strategic social media campaigns, partnership with local media, and flyers distributed at community centers can further raise awareness. This would ensure residents of all ages know exactly where to find support they need. Second one, building bridges of service. There are residents like my neighbor, Sagar, who is a certified yoga instructor, and David, who is a certified dietitian, who are passionate about giving back to the community. However, they lack a platform to connect their skills with those who need them. We can create a matchmaking model that connects individuals offering services like STEM classes, yoga instructors, art workshops, with residents seeking such enrichment. This could be a dedicated online platform with user profiles and search functions, or even a series of community skills share events. The model empowers residents to contribute their talents, creating a win-win situation for everyone. And third, but not the least, feedback as a compass. Understanding the needs and desires of the community is crucial. The Human Services Commission can regularly conduct online surveys, social media polls, open forums, to gather feedback from residents of all ages and backgrounds. Additionally, hosting community workshops focused on specific topics can spark conversation and generate valuable insights. By actively seeking feedback, we can ensure that the Human Services Commission's programs and resources remain relevant and address the evolving needs of the Samamish community. This three-pronged approach encompasses awareness, connection, and feedback, will ensure that human services in Samamish reach those who need them the most, while empowering citizens to contribute their skills and build a stronger, more vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can bring Kevin on.
I'll now promote Kevin Phung.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Kevin. How you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good. All right, so you will have five minutes. You can introduce yourself and then answer the question that you had ahead of time, which is, are there any gaps in programs or policies related to the work of the Human Services Commission that you would like to help the city address? And please explain. So go ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
Great. My name is Kevin Phung. I am a pharmacist and have lived in Samamish for a little over four years now. I was born and raised in rural Vietnam, and have been fortunate enough to have all the opportunities I have had to be where I am today. And so because of that, I am deeply believed that we're all obligated to do more than just better ourselves, but to give back to those who are less fortunate. With that, I've been involved as a founder and a board member for community nonprofits for many years now, including serving as a president of a nonprofit called Vietnam Health Clinic, which is an organization that have been providing free healthcare access to now almost over 20,000 patients in rural Vietnam. And that's just an example of where my passion lies. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I also believe in real change needs to happen at the local level, and I see Samamish as a place that I want to support, because I want my current two-year-old son to grow up in a community that celebrates giving back and serving others. So to answer the question of, you know, how I can serve, and then the current commission, I'm, I think I'm aware that the last assessment of needs, I think, occurred around 2018, and a lot has happened since then, namely a pandemic. So I do believe that we need to attempt in identifying the current areas of need, such as mental health, and ensure that the services that we provide have a culturally proficient and sensitive approach to it, because different ethnic minorities receive care differently, and we need to be aware of that to create a sustainable, long-lasting impact for our community. So I'm hoping to lend my personal and professional experience to the rest of my commissioners to bring access to quality healthcare to our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin. All right, council, if you will fill out your ballots, and then we will do a tally for both.
Do you think, should we do one at a time, just because we have one applicant that applied to both, or do you have any suggestion on how to do that?
Let's see, so what does it say to do first? So the first one says Arts Commission, so if we want to do that one first?
Do Arts Commission and then do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, do each one separate. Yep, thank you.
All right, council, so congratulations, Mike. You are being appointed to the Samamish Arts Commission, and I think, let's see, the term ends January 31st, 2026. Yeah, so thank you, congratulations.
Just one clarification. I believe they have a meeting on Monday, so we should get you figured out quickly. You'll get an email tomorrow.
All right, so next up, we have our Human Services ballots. All right, thank you. So first, I'm going to let Deputy Mayor Howe thank all of the applicants like she does.
I'm so excited that you decided to come back, because I remember grabbing you in the hallway and saying, please, please, please come back, and please, you know, bring your skills and your talent to us, and I'm so grateful that you did that. And that's actually to every, everyone, and I'm also talking to Kevin now, who's remote. Please come back. You're amazing. And I already sent you an email, because there's another group I want you to look at, that I'm happy to help you get onto the board, because you would be so spectacular. And thank you for being willing to contribute to the community. It really matters, and I am in awe of the, frankly, of the resumes you guys bring. It really ripples and amplifies anything that we're trying to do here that's good. You make it so much better.
Congratulations. Okay, council, so I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-1049, appointing Mike to the Samamish Arts Commission.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and then I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-1050, appointing Sumya to our Human Services Commission.
So moved. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Does anyone know offhand when the first Human Services Commission meeting is? Yeah. Well, hopefully not Monday, or next week, I mean.
It's not Monday.
Okay.
We'll have a, you'll get a communication tomorrow introducing you to the liaison and helping you get on-boarded, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, so next up, we have consent, and I am pulling item number 10, so we'll vote on that one separately. So I will entertain a motion for a consent calendar for everything but 10.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and for item number 10, Councilmember Stewart?
I would like to recuse myself, please.
Got it.
Just because there's a confused look on the dais, I just want to share that one of the vendors in the contract, I have a family member that works there, so I'm recusing myself.
Great, thank you. So all those in favor to approve consent item number 10, say aye.
Aye.
Whoops, wait.
Wait.
Hold on.
That's not what you meant.
Sorry. Please, I will entertain a motion to approve item number 10 from the consent calendar. To approve it.
So moved.
Thank you. Would anyone like to second that?
Second.
All right, so all those in favor of the polled consent agenda item number 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so six-zero for that one. Thanks, everybody. Sorry, I'm making it more confusing. So first up, we, yes.
Really quickly, just to follow up on the Human Services Commission, Wednesday, May 8th is the next Human Services Commission meeting date. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Mike's always somewhere. Yeah. Okay, so we have our proclamations to start with. We're going to do Earth Day with Councilmember Stewart. plastics and other things by investing in innovative technologies and materials to build a plastic-free world. And whereas the future of our planet depends on our ability to confront the plastic crisis and preserve the health and vitality of our oceans, lands, and communities, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of the Semamish City Council, does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day in the city of Semamish.
And we will be doing a tree planting with Arbor Monastery School on Monday. I don't know who's all going to be there, but yeah.
And on Saturday, we have events at Beaver Lake Lodge, which I think we're stealing the city manager's thunder, you know. Always.
Sorry.
But yes, Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00, I believe, at Beaver Lake Lodge, we will be celebrating Earth Day. And we have an agenda item later where we'll talk more about some of the exciting things Semamish is doing and that residents can participate in.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, our proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Kaylee. Oh, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Week in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978 and made into a month-long event in 1990, designated in May as the Heritage Month. And whereas the timing of the commemoration in May was chosen to coincide with two significant historical events, on May 7th, 1843, the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants to the United States, and 2nd May 10th, 1869, the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad, largely built by Chinese immigrant labors. And whereas the diverse Asian American and Pacific Islander communities present in the Pacific Northwest region include populations of Chinese, Filipino, Japanese, Korean, Vietnamese, Hawaiians, Samoans, and other Pacific Islander groups. And whereas the diverse backgrounds within the AAPI community encompass more than 50 ethnicities and languages across all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, which includes New Guinea, New Caledonia, Beniwatu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands. Micronesia, which includes Myrnas, Guam, Wake Island, Palau, Marshall Islands, Kiribati, Nowru, and the Federated States of Micronesia. And Polynesia, which includes New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Ratuoma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, Tuvalu, Cook Islands, French Polynesia, and Easter Island, Rapa Nui. And whereas today, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders comprise one of the fastest-growing racial groups in the United States, however, they continue to face challenges such as discrimination, hate crimes, and disparities in healthcare, education, and employment. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance AAPI must put forth to be heard, seen, and these additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systemic injustices. And whereas we acknowledge Asians and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Washington for more than 200 years, and the Asian population in Semamish is 31.7% per the U.S. census, contributing to Washington's and the United States economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Semamish does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, now we are on to our presentations. We have Anjali and Sarah from the YMCA.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. It is my pleasure to introduce your next presenter, Sarah Bianco-Fiori, Associate Vice President of Branch Operations for the YMCA of Greater Seattle. The city of Semamish has an agreement with the YMCA of Greater Seattle to operate and maintain the city's community and aquatic center. According to that agreement, the Y provides the city with an annual report, which is included in your packets. Sarah is here in person to share all the programming that the Y offers the community and much, much more. She has been with the Y for close to 18 years and has a wealth of experience. With that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Anjali, and good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many familiar faces. We're all friends and family here. Well, thank you first for the opportunity to come talk about the YMCA. I could talk about the YMCA for days because it's a special place in my heart. So I have for you just a short presentation to kind of make the report come to live that I presented to you. Fancy system you have here. You guys gave me panelists and boom, the presentation is on the screen. So first and foremost, I want to thank all of you in the city of Semamish. We would not be able to do what we do at the YMCA without this partnership, and every day I'm grateful for it. It starts with the facility. Someone today, I was interviewing someone, and they're looking around, they're like, this place is like a spa. And they're like, you get to work here? I was like, yes, I do. So everything from the facility and everything surrounding the facility. So we have a lot of things that happen inside the walls and also outside the walls. So yoga in the park, having the opportunity to be at the Semamish Farmer's Market. And last but not least, our big event Extravaganza had over 3,000 people last year, and then we just finished up that event this year. So again, just want to thank all of you for that partnership because we wouldn't be here without, without the city of Semamish. So it starts with staff. So the YMCA had a great year in 2023, a year of growth, a year of normalcy, a year of seeing a lot of increase in not only membership, increase in programs, increase in community partnerships, and an increase in our staff. And so we had a great year, you know, ups and downs per the usual, but at the end of the year, we look back, man, we had, wow, 2023 was really great. And the Semamish Y continues to be strong. You know, coming out of COVID, like all of us, no easy task was a challenge, but we started to feel like, oh, this feels normal again, and I highlight Y. So, you know, we grew to 273 staff in 2023 at our highest. You know, we get up to about 450 at peak season. And this is just kind of an example of the staff team on the bottom right. My aquatics team has a special place in my heart. They're a team of about 75 people, mostly come from your local high schools. A lot of them are recruiting their friends, they're starting to tell them about the Y because we've been needing more and more staff. And that just says a lot when they're recommending their friends, referring their friends. As a leadership team, we've had some changes from our department heads, but overall, the retention has been really high. We have had transition in our main leader, so I have the pleasure of serving as your branch exec right now. I would keep this job forever if I could. We had transitioned from Nate in the last year, and we've been working to rehire that position. I did have a great interview this week. I'm hoping to report that we have this position hired in the coming weeks. I have been in that role and will continue to be in that role until we hire that person, and we'll have a smooth transition once we get that person hired. So staff team is doing solid, and they're doing a lot of great work. Kind of the numbers in action, we got some great numbers to highlight. We saw over half a million visits this year at the Y, which is our pre-COVID numbers. It's a half a million people entering the Y to do a lot of the different programs, which is an impressive number. We had over $260,000 contributed going back to the families who need us most, and so that is membership scholarship and program scholarship. Just under 67,000 people decided they should tackle a Group X class, so everything from Zumba to boot camp to chair yoga. We had over 32,000 visits in, I think, the most fun zone, our adventure zone, and that is where kids get to play, why their guardians get to work out, or simply just have a cup of coffee. We had over 16,000 meals served in the Semamish community, so we know that there is a hunger need, and so we partnered with some of our people in the association office to ensure that meals were provided throughout the Semamish community. Over 12,000 individual people are a part of the Semamish Y, they're members of the Y. That equates to just about 5,200 units, so a unit is a family unit or a single adult unit, and then it equates to just under 13,000 individual people. 7,900 swim lessons were provided at your Semamish pool. We'll talk about the pool a little bit later. Over 3,000 local residents took advantage of the community event, again, partnership with you all. We had 772 youth who took a chance and decided to try a new skill in our youth sports program. Pickleball league for our kids is a hit right now at CWU. Over 700 campers, you know, kind of developed that sense of independence during our summer camp program. And 60 families for the, we had our first-time holiday tree giving program, we had 60 families sign up for that who felt like they needed some support during the holidays for their families. So a ton of program and member impact. These numbers all grew from the previous year, which is our goal, and growing, not just for our benefit, because the more we grow, the more we know that we can serve the community, which is what we're here to do. So it's just kind of a couple highlights. We swam, we played, we danced, we had fun in 2023. And so this is just kind of a collection of photos that happened throughout our, the community Y. Popcorn, the popcorn machine currently is stored in my office, so it's very antagonizing to see that machine and not always have popcorn in it, but fun little addition there. And every day is fun at your YMCA, and so everything from hiking to swimming to playing basketball and dressing up like Richard Simmons also happens at your YMCA. We can get you that costume later. Not only does it take a village with our staff, we have an incredible team of board members. This is where I think I, why I don't ever want to leave this job, I feel really honored to work with a great group of volunteers. So we have 18 board members at the Semamish Y. We've grown that over the last year, so the last year has really been spent a lot of team building and working together as a team. But this group of volunteers, they're out in the community advocating, they're supporting the Y, supporting the city of Semamish, trying to bring forward local businesses, local organizations that we can partner with, and really are just a collection of amazing human beings. So great group of people that have helped us really make the Semamish Y what it is right now. And in order to raise money and do what we need to do, teamwork to make a dream work. And so last year, we had, we raised $120,000. It goes directly back into the community to those that need us most. The board put on an annual breakfast last year. We had about 100 attendees. If you were there this year, we doubled in size and moved to the big gym. So last year, again, great success. We did it on Valentine's Day, you know, show the love. And again, this was all spearheaded by our Board of Volunteers, and it's the kickoff the campaign that we then do for over the next three months. And that campaign is critical for us to really do what we need to do. This allows us to say access to all. You come in for swim lessons and you need support, we got you. You come in and you're like, hey, my family's really struggling for a meal, we got your back. I need a free membership, we got your back. And so really gives us the ability to say, how can we serve you and what else do we need to do to kind of cover that gap? And that's really what that campaign has been about. I do want to highlight again, I think this is just a really, this really came out of, this tripled in size after COVID. We have a hunger initiatives team that we partner with our association office, and they went out and looked in all of King County communities and say, where is there a gap? Where do we need to support? And so they have worked with us and partnered with Highland Gardens, Rosecrest, and different events around the Semamish community to ensure that we can provide meals and snacks as needed. And so sometimes people don't think that's something that we do or that is needed, and so it's a great program that we're able to partner with our other partners in our YMCA in order to do more in the local community. Again, swim lessons is one of our biggest priorities at the YMCA. We have the fortune to live in the beautiful Pacific Northwest surrounded by water. We want to make sure all kids have the opportunity to get in the pool and to learn how to swim. And so we, as a YGS, had over, had 41,000 sessions of swim lessons. Semamish contributed to just under 8,000 of those, and we're continuing to do more. So we are in the midst of a pool project. The activity pool is set to open at the end of this month, which is really exciting. We have been able to do as much swim lessons even with one pool down. We're kind of double down, double, triple scheduling how our pool works in order to do those swim lessons, but hoping to serve more of those swim lessons as that's one of our highest needs. We have wait lists, so we're continuing to try to open up more lessons as we know that swimming lessons does saves lives, and it's incredibly important in the area that we live. Just some highlights from our pool. Again, we've got some great new swim instructors who are, we've got some new curriculum that's out there, and they're getting really excited to be able to teach kids. And it's pretty special to watch teenagers teach young kids how to learn how to swim, teaching them a life skill, and they don't realize it in the moment what they're doing, and then you remind them, and they're like, oh, it's pretty cool. So being able to watch that every day is pretty special. So we've got, you know, staffing is solid, we've got our Board of Volunteers, we've got our programs, you know, and that last thing, and it may be some of the most important is our ability to collaborate and connect in the community. We're really honored to have some strong partnerships, Issaquah Food Bank being one of them, our Giving Tree Program, again, we put a tree up and said, hey, these are families that need help. The response from this community was remarkable. We had 100 participants or 60 participants, and those tags went pretty quickly. And so again, this community is, as you all know, eager to help, eager to serve, eager to make it a healthier community. And then our camp, we have a group of volunteers come out to our camp and help do some project improvements. And I would say the community engagement and partnership is something that I have, over the last year, I think, has been a real highlight for the Semamish Y, really trying to figure out who else needs to access the Y, who are we not serving, and how can we serve them. Big thing to highlight, Semamish friends, I love me some Semamish friends. We have been working with them. They said, hey, Sarah, we want a pickleball program, and we need some space, and we need, we need help, and we're like, well, let's make it happen. And Sally is just a gem, and she's like, if we can, if we say we can do it, we can dream big, let's do it. I'm like, Sally, I'm with you. So really neat partnership. Every Saturday, we have a pickleball program for 55-plus at CWU. We have it open to anyone at the YMCA on Fridays. We get 40, 45 people are coming to that pickleball program. So really working with Semamish friends, what else can we do to serve seniors? And so that's been a really beautiful partnership that started last year and continues on to this year. Again, City of Semamish, I can't thank you enough, and all our other project partners for this tile project. I never knew I would know so much about tiles and all sorts of things, but we are, you know, getting to a real highlight achievement spot at the end of the month. The facility looks beautiful. I walked the activity pool, and I was like, oh, man, this is pretty. So the locker rooms have been open, semi-open, members are loving it. Showers will open at the end of the month, and the activity pool, some great improvements. Members are patient, and they're just excited for what's to come. So we're going to try to do some community events to kind of, no pun intended, have a big splash with the family, family pool open and really welcome in community, encourage them to come try out their YMCA and particularly the activity pool. Our water walkers are very eager to get in that lazy river. So we need a, we need a slide tester if any of you want to be the first to go down the slide after it's, okay, Pamela, I got you down. Okay, I'm going to call you on that. I don't want to do it, so I need someone to do it. Perfect. So yeah, so more to come on that, but we'll start to get out comms regarding that so that everyone knows kind of the status of the project. And again, just our members say it all the time, our community members say it all the time, they're grateful for this community in Semamish, and they say this community in Semamish, it's the Semamish Community Y, and we hear that all the time. And I just think, again, kudos to all of you leaders in this community, but we get it on the other side where people come through our doors like, I just love this Semamish community, or people that are visiting, like, this is such a great community. And so we feel fortunate that we get to serve in this community, and the Y is doing some great things and had a really great year. And we had one more thing that we wanted to say. If this technology is really good, I'm going to be impressed with my I walked the activity pool and I was like, oh, man, this, this is pretty. So the locker rooms have been open, semi-open, members are loving it. Showers will open at the end of the month and the activity pool, some great improvements. Members are patient and they're just excited for what's to come. So we're going to try to do some community events to kind of, no pun intended, have a big splash with the family, family pool open and really welcome and community, encourage them to come try out their YMCA and particularly the activity pool. Our water walkers are very eager to get in that lazy river. So we need a, we need a slide tester. If any of you want to be the first to go down the slide after it's, okay Pamela, I got you down. Okay, I'm going to call you on that. I don't want to do it, so I need someone to do it. Perfect. So yeah, so more to come on that, but we'll start to get out comms regarding that so that everyone knows kind of the status of the project. And again, just our members say it all the time, our community members say it all the time. They're grateful for this community in Samamish. And they say this community in Samamish, it's the Samamish Community Y. And we hear that all the time. And I just think, again, kudos to all of you leaders in this community. But we get it on the other side where people come through our doors like, I just love this Samamish community. Or people that are visiting, like, this is such a great community. And so we feel fortunate that we get to serve in this community. And the Y is doing some great things and had a really great year. And we had one more thing that we wanted to say. If this technology is really good, I'm going to be impressed with myself. I'm not that impressive. I don't know how to get sound. I'll have to send it, but this is a group of people that are key participants in our YMCA, and they're all saying thank you. And so I just think this Y is filled with youth all of the time. Those are our youth lifeguards, our youth in the adventure zone, our youth playing basketball. And so it really is a place for youth to thrive and build confidence and meet new people, which is pretty special and it's, and it's a safe place. And so that is all I have. I want to, I want to thank you again. We, we feel really good about this year. Despite the tile project, there's some hiccups there. And so we feel good about making up, making up some of those losses. But at the end of the day, 2023 was solid and we expect 2024 to be even better. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, counsel, do you have any questions for Sarah? Deputy Mayor Howe?
Hi, Sarah. Thank you for that presentation. It's helpful. The thing that I'm really interested in is getting kind of a, a short piece that actually that we can share with the public that helps them understand what community aspects we offer, the Y offers, to residents who are not members. Because I think there's a lack of clarity and understanding on what the Y offers that you don't have to be a member to be involved. And I know that there's a substantial list and I don't happen to have it off the top of my head. But what I would love is if I could get just like the five or six points. And then I would add to that, then the, the meal support. For example, that would be another thing. And the meeting room space and things like that.
Yeah.
These are, they all add up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's hard to kind of corral them. So if you could help me do that, that would be terrific.
Absolutely. I think we have something and we can build on it, but I agree with you. And we say it all the time, but having it in one place. And that's something that really was eye opening for the seniors when they're like, you don't have anything for non-members. And I was like, actually, we have this. Or they're like, whoa. And so, yeah, it'd be great to kind of have that in one spot.
And it might even be something that we, you know, put into the newsletter so that it just gets wider distribution and so forth.
Yeah.
The other thing that I was just going to mention is that I appreciate how accessible you are. Because if I have to ask you something, it's usually not going to be happy. But you are right on it. And you come right back to me with, I will talk to that person. We will work on this, we will solve it. And it's that kind of attitude of we're going to fix this.
Yeah.
Or solve it is, I so appreciate it.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
You're welcome. And thanks for passing those on to me, the few that you have. I've met with those members and they've turned into really great conversations. Like the latest one, and I was like, you're our most engaged member. Like, let's have a conversation. And so we've turned that basketball thing around and there was another one. And so I find those conversations to be really rich because I know if they're complaining upset, they're actually more engaged than maybe we thought. And so that opportunity to sit with them is always good for me. So I appreciate that feedback.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you for your presentation. I was just noticing that in your annual, the report, that there was issues outside of the tile. And it's actually the first time I've heard of them. And maybe this is something the city manager can talk about. Like what, how's the cost being split? Or is it being split? I'm just not aware of what's going on there.
I, yeah, I don't, I know the, not the full details, but she would be better definitely to explain that breakdown as we've been having conversations with the city regarding that. Are you talking about the fourth paragraph there? Talking about the original build?
Yeah, that there's issues in the locker rooms, the shower walls, the numerous issues.
I can take a stab at this and then hopefully Anjali can jump in here and help out on the specifics. But when the walls were pulled out and the tile was pulled out, it turns out there was rot within the framing behind the wall. And that turned out that you can't re, re-put everything back in if the, if there's rot in the framing. And so that had to be replaced as part of the project. And it has, costs have increased. And we have worked together with the YMCA to partner on how to address those and who's responsible for what. And I will say that Y has been a great partner in that project. But hopefully, sorry, Anjali, you're going to get. Councilmember Lamb was asking about the increases in the project costs and how they're being divvied out in terms of response, cost responsibility.
I don't have the exact divvied out, but he said it's been a partnership in how we've figured out those costs.
Right.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. So far, the increase in costs is within what council authorized, within the council contingency. So there hasn't been a reason to really, you know, think about anything out of the box. But if the costs go up beyond what council has authorized, then we will be working with them on options with the Y.
Thank you. That's good to know. I was wondering why it didn't come back to council, but you explained it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gupta?
Thank you very much for your presentation. In the packet, I mentioned the Pedaling for Parkinson's Program as something that's offered to the community. I think it's really impressive just seeing everything the Y offers. That one is new to me, so I wondered if you could tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, our Healthy Living Director actually leads that. It's Pedaling for Parkinson's is people who are experiencing Parkinson's disease. And so it's an opportunity to come into a cycle class, but it's set up so it's adaptable for people who are experiencing that. So it might be that they're in a recumbent bike or the class is modified so that all those participants feel like they can get through the class versus coming to just a general cycle class. You might adapt individually if you're going through that. But this, the curriculum is really tailored to work with people who are experiencing that. And it's amazing program. We've had, we used to do it a lot more and then we just started bringing it back. But really, we had a lot of people who come through that program and are just so grateful. There's not a lot out there. And so coming back and they'll come to the Y and feel like there's a place for them. That ends up being that space, in a really safe space.
Awesome. That's amazing. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the question.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I will, I can forward to the council once I find it. But the, in the contract between the city and the YMCA, it calls out the specifics in terms of what kinds of repairs are the responsibility of the city versus the Y in quite a bit of detail. And a few years ago, we went through that with quite the fine tooth comb. So I can share that with you so you can see. But it is a really great partnership. And I have every confidence in our facilities manager here in the city that she is absolutely on top of all of that. So.
Yep.
Excellent. Thanks.
Yep.
And thank you for your presentation and, and your partnership. Appreciate it.
And your slide ride.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Sarah. I don't see any other questions, so yay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Come check out the Y soon.
Okay. All right. So next up, is it Rose that's taking the next topic, Scott?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. It was the one thing that didn't have the name. So I was like, okay. Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement with Rose.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Let me go ahead and pull up this presentation here. And let me give this one more try. Let me know when that presentation is on screen. It seems like my internet is just a little bit slow tonight.
Hey, Rosa, this is Scott. It's up, but we're not seeing it in presentation mode at the moment.
It's showing presentation mode on my end. Is that updated?
Sorry, not, not, not sharing the screen, but on PowerPoint, it's not in presentation mode.
Yeah, it is on presentation mode on my screen here.
All right, we'll make it work. See if you can switch slides and we'll see if it actually tracks with you.
It does not look like it's tracking. Amber, do you mind pulling up the presentation? I just emailed it to you.
Sure, I just need a minute.
Okay, sorry about that. Not sure what's going on here. I'll go ahead and stop my chair. Even tried turning off video, but alas. And while she's pulling that up, I can give a brief introduction here. My name is Rose Wyker. I am the Natural Resource and Environmental Sustainability Coordinator at Samamish. And I'm here tonight to present on the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement, otherwise known as the ECP ILA. The ECP is a group of local eastside cities working collaboratively to create programs that reduce local sources of climate pollution and advance collective sustainability initiatives to meet ambitious goals set by the K4C and individual cities. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. Or the first slide. Great. Samamish joined the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, or the K4C, in 2015 and signed the K4C joint commitments that same year. After many months of development and robust stakeholder engagement in December of 2023, the Samamish City Council also adopted its first climate action plan. During the final quarter of 2023, the city council established a sustainability commission to support further implementation of the climate action plan and other sustainability initiatives. Joining the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement aligns with the climate work done in Samamish so far and sets the city up for success in future cap implementation and sustainability initiatives. Next slide. The Eastside Climate Partnership is a cooperative opportunity to increase efficiency and collaboration in achieving environmental goals. The intent of the ILA is to allow deeper partnerships and collaboration among eastside cities. Joining the ILA would also make it easier for Samamish to pursue joint procurement, shared contracts, and shared sustainability staff positions through pooled funds. As of 2024, the Eastside Climate Partnership is open to eastside jurisdictions that are served by Puget Sound Energy. This geographic limitation is not intended to be exclusive, but to ensure that the Eastside Climate Partnership can effectively work on programs and projects together and that it does not dilute the K4C. Next slide, please. The Eastside Climate Partnership coordinates on the following efforts, including outreach, coordination, solutions and program implementation, and grant applications and funding. I do want to note that joining the Eastside Climate Partnership does not provide Samamish access to grant funds previously secured by the ECP. Samamish would need to participate in application processes to be included in future grants. Next slide. The ECP joint initiatives for 2024 and beyond are Energy Smart Eastside, Future Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventories, the Community Climate Challenge, and Clean Buildings Incentive Program. There are also some other initiatives in the works for '25 and '26 that Samamish would be part of the conversation for once joined. So, oh, oh, sorry, if you don't mind just keeping that slide up. Staff would like the city council to consider authorizing the city manager to sign the Eastside Climate Partnership ILA to participate in these joint initiatives and future sustainability programming in collaboration with our eastside partnership cities. Once joined, the sustainability coordinator will work with the sustainability commission to evaluate each of these initiatives and will bring updates to council accordingly. Thank you.
Great, thank you, counsel. Any questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Gupta?
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign onto the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Did you have a comment on the motion, Councilmember Stewart?
Well, I think, did you want to speak to your motion? Well, I just wanted to say yay, this is exciting. There's a lot of great work being done across the east side and I'm glad that we are catching up and joining in. So thank you, Rose, and the rest of staff. And thank you to the other eastside cities for letting us join.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lamb, did you want to speak to that motion?
I support this. I just wanted to mention that I read that we won't be, or we are considering dropping out of the Samamish Climate Challenge. It is in the agenda and it's disappointing. But I recognize so far that only 57 homes or households have joined. And hopefully, there'll be something better in its place.
All right. If there is nothing else, all those in favor of the ILA, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you so much, Rose.
Thank you all.
Looking forward to next steps. Okay. Item number 19, the approval for the supplemental agreement for contract management for the Lewis Thompson Road Tightline Project. And we will have Audrey, Doug, and Jed.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the, for the record, I am Audrey Sarsay, Public Works Director. This evening, I am joined by Greg Stamathew, Deputy Public Works Director, as well as Jed Ireland, Senior Project Engineer. Jed is managing the Lewis Thompson Road Tightline Project. And we are very excited to be preparing to begin the construction phase of this very important project this summer. So we are here this evening to present a contract supplemental agreement with Osborne Consulting for construction management services. We do have a short presentation prepared this evening with a recommended motion for your consideration at the end of the presentation. Jed, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
And do we have Greg somewhere? Is he, need to be promoted? Or is he on?
He, I'm assuming is in the queue to be promoted.
Thanks, Audrey. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'll just wait a moment. I believe the screen should be showing and visible.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'll get started. Lewis Thompson Road Tightline Construction Management Supplement. Tonight, we'll be talking, I'll just give a brief overview of the project, describe a little bit of the construction phase that involves this construction management support that we're seeking your approval for. And then some of the anticipated impacts and challenges and how we're addressing those. And then we'll conclude with a recommended motion for the contract supplement. This may be familiar to you. This is what you've seen at a, just the last council meeting, a presentation related to CIP projects. And so the star shows that we're going from design into the construction phase, which is very exciting. And so we're just going to roll out some of the dates that are related to this project, which I think was a case study or example for the year of the capital improvement plan discussion. The 2016 Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. The Zachuse Basin Plan was initiated in 2017 and concluded in 2019. And then this project was added to the stormwater improvement plan and then as the transportation improvement plan in 2022. And we awarded design and permitting contract. And then now we're looking at the construction phase. And then in the future, we'll be closeout monitoring in future phases for the design life of this project. Just showing, this is showing and demonstrating that there's been a lot of public comment. There's been a lot of public outreach. There's been a lot of formation related to this, our program and this project, as an example. Project stakeholders, you know, this is a slightly modified version of what you had seen at a, at the last council meeting. It shows the Samamish community and all the collaboration efforts that we have going into a project like this. And just highlighting a few for agencies and tribes. For instance, U.S. Postal Service. And then also the school districts have been involved with us related to traffic and preparation for the construction season. It'll be starting for this project in summer. As well as the tribes, the tribes will be having a construction observer for a portion of the project as we do exploration and subsurface work. Also, we have our funding partners, which I'll get into that in a later slide. The project team, you can see here that up to now, the design phase team, you can see the list of the different disciplines that have had a hand in this project, including the consultant design team, which includes environmental resources, geotechnical engineering survey and civil engineering. And the construction phase team, of course, has different disciplines And the construction phase team, of course, has different disciplines that are helping out with this project, and which you can see on this org chart. So, for this evening, we're asking for construction management services as a supplement to the engineering contract. It provides construction management, geotechnical material testing with compaction testing, for the most part, and also construction engineering support. This will be supporting city staff that will be on this project pretty much full-time, including our Public Works Inspector, Jim Krieg, and then myself, I'll be the resident engineer, the engineer that'll be on the issues representing the city. Here are the project costs, and I would just want to emphasize in this table that the, the construction supplement that we're asking for, that will be signed if approved, is the $577,000 figure. That's the, that's the one for the construction management. In the agenda bill, we mentioned we've included the 10% reserve, which would be authorized only by the city manager in the event that we need additional services. You can also see that there is a credit for Samamish Plateau Water reimbursement. We're partnering with Samamish Plateau Water. They are replacing an old AC water main as part of this project. Not only does it help us to accommodate the new stormwater pipe, but it also gives them a new ductile iron pipe in this area. And so, that's a vital service, but because of that, some of our construction services will be supporting their efforts. And so, they, the estimated credit is that figure shown there, $160,000. In addition to that, we expect to bring to the May 7 council meeting an interlocal agreement with Samamish Plateau Water to memorialize this agreement and the reimbursement by the district for these services. And so, that'll be on consent probably for the May 7 meeting. And of course, we don't want to miss our funding partners. Council has seen this most recently where we, where council approved our agreement with King County Flood Control District for the reduction grant in 2023. That was $300,000, but this is the total funding partners for this project. And then, just a brief word on some of the construction challenges. I've highlighted one element on Lewis Thompson Road. The construction challenges are, as we're building on the right side, we've got the cross-section that we're constructing, and we've got a blue circle that shows the new water main, and the green circle will be the new storm pipe. And of course, we've got sidewalk, curb gutter, and then retaining walls, detention structures, water quality structures, things like that, that are all near the sidewalk area. And if you look at the road section here, we're looking uphill, and this is, this, the cross-section will be overlaying essentially this existing narrow road where we have limited shoulders, and we have steep private roads, streets, or driveways on one or both sides. And we've got trees, we've got low, overhanging lines and poles. So, all of this is just, it's just difficult to fit in. We need a work zone to fit in and get this constructed while getting the deliveries and all the other services and school bus traffic. So, this, this shows the same area as a close-up, showing a little bit more of what the work zone might be like. This might be where the construction crews will be staging equipment, cranes, and materials in order to build the infrastructure that'll be going just to the left, onto the slope, which is the existing ditch. And so, for this reason, we'll be doing detours to try to keep people that don't need to be on this road, keep them away. We want to keep this for residents, and their essential deliveries and school bus traffic. And we'll be doing lane closures, obviously, but we're also foreseeing that one-way traffic is going to make sense here because it'll allow the work zone or one of the lanes on the road to be used as a central laydown or buffer for materials and construction. And if you can look up the road, you can see that, it's difficult to see around the corner, it's impossible. And so, the work zones will be going from corner to corner and beyond corners, and if you have one-way traffic, it allows people leaving driveways or side streets, they know which direction to go. It can be an inconvenience, but it also means that it's more practical, and there'll be less stopping and with, you know, waiting for one-way, for traffic to be switched. Now, to deal with this, the construction and all of the other information, you know, we have a communication plan for the construction phase. Our topics will be related to very much the construction schedule, traffic impacts, also parking impacts. A lot of the residents, if we start resurfacing their driveways or their side street approaches, there'll be times where they have nowhere else to park, and there's not much parking on Lewis Thompson. In fact, people don't park on Lewis Thompson, for the most part. And so, we'll have that information, including project coordination with, for instance, King County Roads, that'll be doing a slight repair on 244th Avenue Northeast this summer. So, what that means is that for the community, there'll be various ways for the community to participate. We'll be having a public meeting prior to construction. Once we onboard the contractor, we'll be able to share their schedule and their specifics, and we will have a virtual meeting for people to get that information. People will have the project website, they can subscribe via GovDelivery, like they can for other project sites or for other, other output coming from the city. We'll also have social media, we'll have project signs, and of course, cone zone for important changes in the traffic conditions. We've also been coordinating with our other partners, police, fire, and Lake Washington School District, King County Roads, and the post office, and then trash services, of course. Next steps, we'll be looking at, as I mentioned before, the interlocal agreement with Samamish Plateau Water. That'll go on May 7 is our plan, and then we are looking forward to the next several weeks, construction bid advertising and a bid award will be coming up. And then, we'll have a public meeting advertised to prepare for the construction and traffic control. And then, construction will begin this summer. And this is our last slide, and this is the recommended motion related to the construction management support supplement. And with that, we're, we will take questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, Jed is, I think that's who was doing the presentation. On the utility pole work, is, is there going to, is it necessary for PSC to also have an interlocal agreement with them for the moving of power lines?
No, so our, what are, the agreement we have with them is a, they have a franchise agreement, and so, they have certain requirements. We have given them a letter demanding that they move to accommodate our project, and they've been doing that, and they have prepared plans, and so, we're working through that schedule. They will be doing that, some of it will be done ahead of time. For instance, right now, PSC Gas is doing some of their relocations to get away from the storm improvements. Some of it will be done in construction to not conflict with the contractor's other schedule. The contractor is expected to primarily start for the first three months on the storm water main for Samamish Plateau Water, and so, that might be an opportunity that summer to be modifying the poles and changing some of the pole heights for some of the lines and the power.
And then, the second question I had was on kind of design for the intersection down at Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. And the, has, how do I put this? I think there's a challenge there that with the project being done on the trail, connection to that ramp that takes you down to the trail, has that been, has that issue been addressed? Or are we looking at that, or is that part of the 100% design?
Yes, that is part of 100% design. We're going to be upgrading that intersection with the latest pedestrian call buttons so that we're ADA compatible, and so, we will have an updated crosswalk to get to that location at the trail.
I guess my challenge is that the way, the lineup of the intersection to the trail connection, right now, I mean, the way it looks to the naked, you know, someone driving down the hill doesn't line up. So, is that issue going to be addressed?
We'll accommodate, we're going to, we're probably going to put the crossing approximately where it is right now, you know, because of the, we're not changing the geometry of the intersection. And so, yeah, there probably will be adjustment. If you're saying that the, the landing for the ramp that they create doesn't exactly line up with the crosswalk, we're going to have to get as close as we can with our design.
Okay, maybe not the answer I was looking for, but that's the answer I just got, so, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And yes, Councilmember Trine, having written that it does not exactly line up, but I'm sure we can make accommodations so that it, it works a little bit better. It does kind of dump you out just kind of right there in the middle of the intersection, and you kind of have to do a hard 90-degree turn so that your bike doesn't jet out into the streets. So, hopefully, we can address a little bit of that. Couple of questions. One, and I apologize if you said this, but when, when we're going to have the one-way under construction, is there going to be a permanent one-way, or is it going to be like the last two times where there's a temporary light and it alternates the one-way on the, on the road?
So, what we're planning for is that there'll be substantial phases where a large portion of the project, maybe a third at a time, is one-way for long durations. And that'll mean so that we have areas to stage the materials, potentially to add parking. And so, we're going to try to limit those areas so that most of the neighborhoods and streets can turn around and have access to two-way traffic as normal. But we're really going to look at phasing to, to really bracket that, but there'll be long-term one-way traffic over certain zones. And our goal is not to be the whole street, if I get your, if I'm answering your question correctly, but it'll be a portion of it, depending on what zones can be effectively worked by the contractor at one time.
Kind of answers the question, what I was really looking for. I know there'll only be one lane, so will it be like, it'll be one-way up the hill, permanent, like for that section, and then if you want to go down the hill, you would go a detour? Or like the last time we did it, we had a temporary lights put in, and so, it was only one lane, but it alternated who got to go. And so, I was just curious how that was going to end, or maybe we haven't figured that out yet.
Yeah, not the latter. We're thinking of not using the latter because there'd be intermediate driveways and side streets that wouldn't be able to see which way the signal's going, it wouldn't make sense to them.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that. And I did have a couple of questions. I'm super excited, as you guys know about this project. I'm particularly excited, as Councilmember Trine brought up, because it is a connection to the trail. It's one of only two connections that we really have to the trail within the city limits that will have actual bike lanes and sidewalks. There are other ways to get there, but they're all a little more for the daredevil who's willing to brave the streets and, and lack of dedicated space. So, I'm super excited by that. I do think there are still a few outstanding questions, if I may. So, as I understand it, the King County Code does require us to make sure that we're looking at that full build-out in that area and what the water flows would be like. And the basin plan, I believe, requires that we have catch basins that Mary was pointing out on both sides of 210th, and that we actually do have code that says we can't have any flooding or overflows on the road, or I forget what the technical term is, topping, I think, on the roadways. So, can you, because when we, when we talked about it before, when Councilmember Lamb and I talked to you guys, you said that there would be some sheeting on the roadways. And I'm just wondering, it, it sounds like we actually have code that says we really can't have that. And so, are there ways that we can address that? And importantly, because I don't want to slow this down in any way, are there ways we can proceed with this and look at potentially doing some amendments or change orders going forward so that we don't slow down the process? So, that's kind of a two-part question there.
Okay, so I'll get started on two, two of those parts. One of them is that just storm drains and side ditches and things like at 210th place, they don't always function all the time. They require maintenance. There's, there are some areas where the edge control has not, needs to be maintained in order to keep flow, and so, there are, there will be times when you have debris, road debris, and other things built up, and so, you get sheet flow that's not entering the existing ditch or the slotted drain that is uphill of 210th Place Southeast. And so, that's something that can be addressed with maintenance, and so, we've talked with maintenance, and that's something that can be addressed at that point. And we can make further modification to ensure that the ditch system that was designed for a prior project is, is working effectively. But because of the storm drain that was installed there, it is working. It is, it does take care of the issues that were there in the past that had caused flooding, but I think it can be improved through some increased maintenance and some targeted maintenance right there. The other issue is that this project does, it, it looks at the 25 and 100-year storms, and so, it's designed to accommodate that. Now, there's two different things. I mean, pipes, we have, we have a pipe size that's designed, and so, the stormwater manual, you design the pipe size for the 25-year, and that's for conveyance, but you have to look at the 100-year, and that includes all the tributary areas and their development. And that looks, you have to make sure that you don't, this project, we've made sure that it doesn't overtop our structures, and so, it doesn't overwhelm the system with the 100-year flow. And so, that, you know, so that's secure. The other issue is that there are, there are issues of just flooding areas that come with less controlled flows coming out of Tamarack, and we have gotten some recommendations. There are areas in the field where we can adjust the paving and drainage or to potentially add a different drain during construction that can kind of capture some of these flows, you know, for some of the issues that have been shared to us. But these are not, these are not things that are bypassing the system. This is not something that's jeopardizing the slopes or the environment because they weren't, they're not part, they're not contained in the stormwater system.
Yeah, and I would love to understand how, how we can do that, because again, as one of only two access points to the trail, I would hate for it to only be, you know, safe for pedestrians and bicyclists to use when it's not raining. And currently, we do have a lot of, of sheeting even in light rain events, right? So, it doesn't even have to be a heavy rain event, it can be a light rain event, and you have water flowing down, the roadways flowing down those shoulders where you're going to be trying to ride up that hill or even down the hill. So, I would love to understand if we can get more details on that. I know when we spoke, you guys said that we couldn't put the, you know, the storm drains that are like in the roadways there, where it comes out of those side streets. So, if that's not an option, I'd love to see what those other options are, because whomever's responsible that water's coming down, it's still sheeting over our roadway. So, even if it's not going to cause major erosion, it's going to cause unsafe conditions for bicyclists and potentially pedestrians, and if it's cold enough, it could even cause challenges for cars. So, I'd love to be able to see how we could address those things. And also, to understand for that last 300 feet, where the tight line is not actually going to go all the way up to 210th. And I don't know, I know Mary has given public comment that that was something that was in the original request. If the tight line isn't going to go all the way up to 210th, what type of piping will we put up for that last 300 feet to deal with those 25-year and 100-year storm events when the, when those catch basins are going to overflow or be full?
Yeah, so if I understand you correctly, the, the last, you know, just downhill of 210th Place Southeast, there's an area where we don't have a, a storm, an 18-inch storm drain pipe going all the way up to 210th. The reason for that is that we're collecting it with a birdcage inlet, a large structure that's capturing that water at 210th, and then it actually goes upstream to an advantageous discharge location in an area that is not steep into Zaccus Creek. The rest of it will be captured in a curb and gutter that'll go down to a catch basin and cross over into a culvert that goes to an existing discharge location. And then, behind that, we do have a pipe that's behind the sidewalk that'll be intercepting yard drains for people, and then that will be taking it to a separate system separately to also go to its discharge location. So, we are collecting it, it just doesn't look like an 18-inch pipe going to 210th. It is because we're collecting it a certain amount of water and runoff through the curb and gutter and then capturing it into a catch basin.
And isn't the curb and gutter the bike lane?
Yes, that's the, yep, that's the area beside the bike lane.
So, is that the best design for our bikers if the goal is to push all of the stormwater into the bike lane? Shouldn't we try to divert that to a different, in a different manner?
Well, that's our city standard, and so, of course, yeah, that is, that is a standard. So, that is, unfortunately, that is a system, that is a design that bikers deal with, and we have a way to capture the water. The alternative is, obviously, we're getting rid of the ditch system, that was a requirement of the basin plan. The reason is, is because of the sediments and the steep slopes and the infiltration, the potential for erosion and the steep slopes, and so, getting rid of the ditches is a priority. Ditches do have an advantage. Ditches do have an advantage otherwise in that sense that you don't have a curb. And because that's something that a bicyclist has to navigate. But bicyclists, this is actually, this road is a, is a little bit more advanced, and bicyclists are typically comfortable with curbs on a street, on a road like this, on a minor arterial.
I don't mind the curb. It's when there's a river of water running down it that it makes it more challenging. So I understand it's our standard, but is there no opportunity for us to deviate from that if that seems less than ideal? I mean, as we look at our multimodal plan, again, this is going to be one of only two roads that will connect pedestrians and bicyclists to the trail, which will link you to the light rail. So I kind of see this as being something that we want to promote in our multimodal transit system. And I feel like, again, when there are rain events, we're going to be pushing the water into the bike lane, which will make it less desirable for people to use. And while it is an advanced roadway, there are more and more people with e-bikes. So I do see a lot more people commuting on some of those steeper slopes because you can, because you don't have to be as fit as Councilmember Gupta to get up those hills.
If I may, Jade, just to chime in a little bit. My understanding is the amount that is captured a little bit further down gradient in the curb and gutter system is a relatively small amount of impervious runoff that will be captured in that gutter line, which is separate, right? It's a little bit off to the side than the actual bike lane itself. So hopefully bikers aren't biking in the gutter. That's a fairly, that's a fairly small width. So just wanted to clarify that, that point a little bit, that this is very typical and it is our standard. I think it's about 150 to 200 feet of impervious right there, where we will see a little bit of runoff in our, in our gutter itself along the curb line.
I guess I'm okay moving forward, but I think we still have some open questions that maybe we can follow up on afterwards, if that would be okay. I'm not totally comfortable with the pushing the water into the 150 feet on that hill for the bike lanes. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you. I have sort of a different kind of question. It has to do with the, which I'm delighted to see, the 3.8 million in grants. What do we have to accomplish in order to be able to, you know, actually get these grants? What work has to start? What contracts have to be in place? Is there any risk at losing these contracts or this grant money, for example, by delaying?
Yeah, there, thanks for the question. There is a risk. The ARPA grant, you have, we have to be in contract to spend the money this year in order to not lose that funding. And then all of the expenses have to be completed through 2026. So we do have a long time to spend the money, but we have to be in agreement to, we have to be in agreement with Commerce in order to spend the money this year. And to do that, we have to essentially have control of the road limits. We have to have our permits. We have to have our right-of-way in order to put in the storm drain.
Okay, and that's actually, was my second question. It has to do with the right-of-way aspect. I know that there's several homeowners that you have to work with. Is that a process that you've been able to start now, or is it something you have to wait?
We're actually in process, and we have, we've secured rights from the majority of the owners, and we continue to work on it. And some of it does involve storm drain. But for the majority of the property owners, it was issues of trees or driveway accesses because we're widening for sidewalk, and so we needed to encroach outside the right-of-way to make sure that their improvements would blend.
Just to add on to that, these are conversations that we've been having for quite a long time with property owners for the project. We are just finalizing our actual legal documents for that construction to happen within the right-of-way.
So once the homeowners have signed off, they're, that's it, right? They're done? They don't get to come back and revisit, right?
No, that's a legally, legally binding document.
Okay, okay. Good, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yeah, regarding that missing portion of the pipe up near 210th, I agree with Councilmember Stewart. I'm also a little bit concerned about water going into the gutter. Is there some sort of visual that you can provide for us to show how the water would potentially move through that area based on the current design? I don't see, I see all types of bikers on that road that will potentially be using that road just because of the connection to East Lake-Samamish Trail. And not everybody's an expert biker. There'll be some younger kids. And so I'm really thinking about really just making it as safe as possible. And for me, I'd really like to be able to understand visually how that water is going to move through. Thank you.
If it's helpful, we can look around and see if we can look at something. Typically, we don't see surface flow in stormwater until that rain rate hits about a tenth of an inch or more. And at that, it's not a very substantial flow. So majority of our precipitation days that this area receives throughout the winter are those lower-flow events. So it would just typically, I think, anything that may have the potential to exceed the gutter, and I'm not sure Jed will have to correct this here, but would be a very high, high-frequency duration of storm. I don't have the isopluveal maps in front of me right now, but typically, I think our three, or 25-year storm is closer to three inches in 24 hours, if I remember correctly. So it's quite a bit.
I would add that on Jed's slide, slide nine shows a profile of this proposed cross-section. It shows the five-foot bike lane, and it shows the curb and gutter, and it shows the inverted crown road. So this is a very, this is a Samamish design. This is a pretty typical industry-standard design for drainage, that the road is crowned so that the water drains towards the gutters. The gutters catch the water, and the gutter is typically about 12 inches in width. It's outside of the bike lane. So the water is captured in an industry-standard bracket outside of the bike lane. It would be a very strange phenomenon if it really spilled into the bike lane. And you could see that on slide nine to an extent.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, appreciate that, Greg. I think what Councilmember Lamb was referring to was the portion at the top that does not have the planned curb gutter sidewalk portion that still has the open gutter along the side without that. But as, if I understood correctly earlier, and team, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the road is designed to crown, and there's only a small portion of it that's going to go into that gutter on that side where the, where the bike lane is. I also want to just remind Council that all of this is actually going to manage the water on the road a whole lot better than it is today, which is the purpose of the project. And that this project originally, and I know Jed showed the slide earlier, started out as a tight-line project to deal with the downflow stormwater. And so the whole project is designed to manage stormwater in an efficient way. And the road portion of the project, and I'm taking after our Canadian IT Director, the road project portion was added on subsequent additional scope to turn it into an actual road project as well as a stormwater project. So I understand and appreciate Councilmember's concern about the top, and we have a number of segments in the community that need to be completed at some point in time. But for the purposes of, again, the stormwater project, that is the, that's the piece that we're reflecting on right now. And I know it has a lot of road impacts on top of it, but all of this is designed to actually manage the water much, much, much better than it is today. And I think that's the purpose of the project.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand. So I know we've talked about the standards, but aren't the standards really a minimum? Like, if we find that our standard isn't going to solve the problems that we're aiming for, we can do more, right? We just can't do less, isn't that?
Typically, our standards, first, well, let me back up here. Our standards align with most other agencies in the state, as well as the state, if not national. So we want to recognize that to begin with. But typically, what we see from private development and even some of our own capital projects, where we're not able to fully meet our standard on this road, is actually the opposite, is deviation requests to deviate from our standards because we cannot meet our standards all the way. So this, this example, in this case, we're not able to fully meet our standards by having a sidewalk on both sides due to environmental constraints.
Right. And then I guess my other question, so we can kind of take some of this offline. I'm kind of getting the look down the dius there to wrap this up. Can we, can we get some more questions answered if we move forward with this now? Can we get some more of these answered? And would we have an opportunity, if we felt like we really needed to make some sort of a design change, to do that still?
We are more than happy to have conversations anytime. I will just remind the community and Council that we will be back several times before this goes out for construction. And one of the, one of those times will be for the construction contract award. So that'll be a next, very, very big milestone for the project.
And that's where, if we had to, we could make changes? Is that, is that fair?
We have, we have finalized the design, and that is going out to bid for the construction, hopefully, construction companies, multiple construction companies to submit their bidding on, or their proposals for the project. So we have finalized the project, it's gone through CEPA, and we are preparing to advertise very soon.
So is that a no?
Let me be a little more direct, Councilmember Correct. To try to change the design now means significant delays on the project. If it's anything substantial other than minor tweaks, because we are at 100% design.
So if we find that there's still sheeting across the roadway, we can't, we can't fix that? We're just going to go with it? With the current design?
And again, Councilmember, I appreciate and I understand what you're saying. I think that where we are with the project and all the design that's gone into it is that it's designed to meet the standards that are, that are required. And I appreciate that sheeting might happen at times. And if it rains hard enough, it's going to happen no matter how good our stormwater system is. So from the perspective of can we solve everything? The answer is probably not. But the project is doing the absolute best that we have right now to address all those issues. And that, that top portion is another project, possibly for another time to try to address that. I think one of the parts that Jed shared out is that there are a couple of different systems at that uphill portion, how it addresses the water that comes off the road up on that portion. So that's a more significant project than it might appear.
But the 210th is not the part that we're not addressing, right? The 210th, between 210th and where the tight line is, there's still work being done. It's just there's not going to be a pipe that connects up to there. So we're not even talking about the part that's uphill from 210th. That's a whole different, that's another 825 feet of sidewalk gap that we're creating that we're not talking about yet. We're talking about just from 210th on down. So, okay, thanks.
All right, Council, would anyone like to make a motion or have any other comments or questions? Yeah, it's right here, too. Sorry, I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we authorize the City Manager to execute a contract supplement with Osborne Consultants for Construction Management Support Services and to administer a 10% management reserve.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that? Does anyone else have anything?
I will speak to it for two seconds. Basically, I've, I've, I've taken a look at the roadway. I've walked it. I understand and appreciate the concerns that members here have, and I hear you. And what I did is I did a decision matrix where I just put columns and A and B, and if we do this way, and if we do it that way. And what it came out to me was on the, was to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good and to allow the project to go forward as scope because I don't want to lose the money. I don't want to put these grants at risk at all. Will it fix everything? Probably not. Will it be better? It better be. I am sure it will be, in fact, because I trust staff that they have done a great job scoping the project and that they are the experts in this and that they will oversee the project in such a way that we will get the maximum benefit out of the money that we're spending. So I'm optimistic that this will work out. I'm also thinking it may not be perfect and that we're going to know a lot more in a couple of years about what other fixes we might have to put in place. And I'm hoping that we're able to kind of figure out, as we work with our consultants, in a way that we're able to elicit the very best work out of them. So if there are good ideas that come along in the process, we're able to leverage and take advantage of them expeditiously.
So, Councilmember Stewart, you'd like to speak to the motion?
Yes, please. So I absolutely trust staff. I've been working with some of you for many years. And I just want to add that in the last 10 years, we've torn this road up and closed it twice. And so this will be the third time. And so I appreciate that we might learn more in a few years, but I think we know a lot now. And so I, I think we need to move forward so we don't lose the money, but I think we need to continue these conversations. And if we decide that a design change is necessary, then we take the steps to do that because doing it now will be infinitely less expensive than doing it again later. And I think that as good stewards of our taxpayers' money, we have to make good decisions now and not do this again. Because every time we have to close the road and tear it up, there's a, there's a cost there that we just pile on to everything else. So I just don't want to see us close that road a fourth time in a very short period of time. So, thanks.
All right, all those in favor of the supplemental agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so by 6-1 with Councilmember Stewart, that passes. So thank you, Audrey and Jed and Greg and Doug. Really appreciate your work on all of this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council.
Awesome. See you soon. All right, next up, we'll start with, or not start, we'll sort of end with City Manager's report with Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's one item that was on the agenda, and this is informational for Council, want to share with the community. It was attached to the Agenda Bill, and it is the cancellation of the interlocal agreement with East Side Fire and Rescue for Emergency Management Services. East Side Fire and Rescue had a change in staff, and they took a look again at what their needs were for the department itself, and they felt that they had needs and within the department that needed to be addressed with that position. And so we agreed that we would take a different path, and we still plan on continuing and partnering with EFER and utilizing that resource to help us with our plans and policies. And we are going to be moving forward. Council may recall that we will be receiving a report from our Disaster Preparedness Consultants in very short order, talking about what our next steps are. And while we have our continuity plans in place, moving forward and continuing to be prepared as a community. A couple other items that are coming up. Councilmember Stewart did steal my thunder from earlier to talk about Earth Day on Saturday. I do want to make sure to invite the whole community and want to put in a plug-in for our 25th anniversary jubilee. As part of that, you have an opportunity to do your video time capsule. And our staff, Rich and his staff, will be there to do the recordings. And so we really encourage everyone, we'd love to hear from folks about their, we have three questions that are pretty straightforward and allow you to talk about how the community has changed and what you like about it, and to put it on our video time capsule that will then be shared out at our jubilee event in August, on August 16th. So we encourage everyone to come out and be a part of that, and looking forward to have everyone join us. The next event coming up is called Rigapalooza. For those that don't know, we bring all the big trucks and park them out on the City Hall Plaza and invite the community in and their kids to come climb around and check out the vehicles and talk to our staff about how they work and all the things that we use them for. It's a really fun event, usually good weather, and that is on Saturday, May 11th, on the City Hall Plaza. Along the lines of the City Hall Plaza, I want to remind everyone that our fabulous farmer's market kicks off in less than a month. Wednesday, May 15th, is the opening day of the farmer's market. The City of Samamish is a proud cosponsor of, the Chamber of Commerce puts on the farmer's market. We are a proud cosponsor, and we are excited to have them out on the plaza again this year on Wednesdays. There will be a ribbon cutting at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, the 15th. For anyone that would like to come, basically ring the bell to start the farmer's market season. I will put in a plug for the amazing staff at the Chamber that this year, they've really, we've seen a lot of increase in interest in being at our farmer's market and we've seen a lot of increase in interest in being at our farmers market, and my understanding is that they have found live performances for each and every farmers market. So really excited about that, excited to have them kick it off and have them back on our plaza, bringing the community together and all the great arts and crafts and food and produce. So please come out and join us. Come out every Wednesday, all and through into September, and they have a number of programs planned for different events. The city will be partnering on at least two of those. One is our Pride Event. It will be Wednesday, June 6th, and then more to follow on that. And then also for Welcoming Week in May, sorry, not May, the other end, September, we will have an event and a program on Welcoming Week at that time. So I really want to encourage everyone to come out and join the community out on the plaza every Wednesday starting May 15th. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything? Okay, I do have, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow, or Thursday, and a Solid Waste Committee meeting on Friday.
Great, thank you. So May 7th, I'm hoping you will all excuse me for that meeting. I'll have Deputy Mayor Howe, good luck. No, it's going to be great. Yeah. If I can miss that meeting, that would be great. And I think, other than that, I think we're all good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, good night, everybody. Thank you.